Each year, my dear friends from Washington City, is in the fifth annual time of nearly one outstanding teacher of the year on the field. This year has passed with a special ceremony, with our 12 months of circumstances of 12 years and years. The seniors have been taken care of. Over eight years teaching in Barville, this is further by providing meaningful instructions to students upon how the school is managed and really founded. One of the fundamental needs is that teachers have a responsible ability to uphold what we have, written and learned through the process. Despite the creative experiences of challenges to students as they grow, connect learning skills in real life, and ensure that they see a limited threat in reading, they work to inspire their students, to passion their desire to be the best version of themselves today. This is Amanda Martin.
Amanda Martins has been teaching first grade at the Austin T. Levy School since 2010. She is a champion of choice and voice for students in her classroom, helping our youngest learners in the district to take responsibility for their own learning, to feel a sense of control and ownership of the work they do, and to be integral members of the classroom and school community. Amanda personifies what it means to have a growth mindset, modeling for her students the importance of grit, perseverance, and rema- Thank you. Mrs. Lawrence, we consider ourselves very fortunate to call you one of our own here in Barville. This award is well deserved. Congratulations on being named Barville's Outstanding Teacher of the Year. Congratulations to Ms. Nancy Lawrence, Barville's Outstanding Teacher of the Year 2019. An outstanding teacher takes a hand, opens a mind, and touches a heart.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to add that reviewing the accomplishments of our outstanding Barville educators is a humbling experience and one that reinforces our pride in this educational community. Mrs. Dyer and Mrs. Martins, we are very lucky to have you in Barville. Congratulations on your many accomplishments, and thank you for all that you do for our children each day, and to all their dedication and service to the children of Barville. And thank you to Mrs. Julie Mayhew for helping me with that. Uh, next item, I would move to, um, move up-
Without objection.
Without objection, I'd like to move to move up item 14, Pending Issues, Resolution on Gun-Free Schools.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Hello, Colonel. Yes.
You wanted to, you wanted to hear from me as to my position on this particular legislation, is that correct?
Correct, yes. This resolution that's been going around regarding gun-free schools.
Sure. The Rhode Island Police Chiefs Association supports the resolution as long as it includes active police officers, as defined within the statute labeled as peace officers, and they include them while they're for duty and while they're off duty, as well as retired members. That's their, um, position on the bill. I would support that, uh, with the only caveat being that the retired members be members that have earned 20 years of service, um, with their department and have retired in good standing. And the reason why I take that position is that I see the schools as basically sacred territory, sacred grounds, and I believe in the training that police officers receive. I believe in the accountability that they're held to as far as, uh, weapon retention, the train, again, the training aspect of that. If there is an issue with a police officer, there is an agency to address that issue. So that's why I have taken the position and believe in the, in the legislation as far as, as long as it includes peace officers as defined, and if you look at that definition, there's roughly 23 entities with what defines a peace officer. It's, it's really widespread, um, everything from local police to correctional officers to any federal law enforcement officer, sheriff, um, all sorts of investigative positions that are held within the state. So I think the, the language as it's carved out, um, is appropriate, but more importantly, I come back to the venue that we're talking about where you're gonna allow firearms to be in play within a school setting, and again, I just come back to that's, that sacred ground. I know that the issue is for concealed weapons permit holders. I deal with that quite a bit, uh, here in Barville. I would say that, you know, the majority of concealed weapons permit holders I hold in high regard, but the problem is I have no idea what they do once they have received that permit and have moved on and they're out in their private lives. There is no accountability for them until after the fact. So I, I know that that is kind of a, a sensitive area as to whether to include concealed weapons permit holders, and I come back to the position of the training that a police officer receives and the accountability within his or her agency, um, that is over their head, if you will, uh, that mandates that they will be responsible with their weapons on a daily basis.
And the resolution as written accounts for just what you've said, but it, the resolution does not include everyone with a carry permit. So just because you have a carry permit does not mean you could be on school grounds.
I support that.
And that's how the resolution is written as you know it?
That's, that's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
And, and I'll be honest with you that this was not unanimous within the Police Chiefs Association. There was some support, um, for concealed weapons permit holders. I thought long and hard about that. I think there are some outstanding members of this community that have those permits, but quite frankly, I've also revoked those permits for conduct that was, uh, was not worthy of having such a permit. And it's that, those incidents that give me pause on including the permit holders into my stance, not into the language. That's, I'm just talking my stance now. So I, you know, I wrestled with that for a little bit because, because of the situation that we have faced, um, in the, in this never ending, never-ending, uh, world of, uh, active shooter in this community. I think we, um, I think we do a, a, a real extensive and a, a very good job of trying to protect our schools with our police officers. We do, uh, initiatives here with school safety that many, many other communities do not do, and that includes having not only our SRO in the school, but having our regular first shift people visit our schools on a, on a regular basis. It's part of their tour. We have officers that are present for the opening and closing of all our schools. That's taxing manpower-wise. It's, it's, it's a taxing within the department, but I do believe that it's absolutely, um, worth that tax on our people. Uh, because, again, I come back to what this building represents and what all our schools represent, and I just see it as sacred ground, and it's worth the investment in the personnel.
Does anyone from the committee have a question for the Colonel?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, you had, you just said that you have offices at the opening and closing of all the schools, so that's 10 offices each day.
One officer at each school.
One officer at each school in the morning and a, in the afternoon.
Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
We just instituted that after the Parkland shooting.
I have a comment also. Yesterday I went to a, Saturday I went to a pro- program, and there was a police officer who teaches other police officers, and I can't remember his name right now.
It was Derek Borak.
Who was it?
Derek Borak.
Derek Borak. And, um, he was saying that if someone who, who has concealed, uh, concealed weapon on him, if he ends up coming into the building and seeing a police officer with a rifle in his hand or whatever those, those, um, weapons are, without, without looking at him and seeing that he's an officer, he said there's a good possibility that he would get shot, that the policeman would be shot.
Anytime you're dealing with, with civilian personnel or personnel that are carrying a weapon and aren't readily identifiable, you have, you have a situation, and, and depending on what brought those two parties together, um, you know, only can exasperate that situation. Can tell you that, um, those, those type of situations permit, present tremendous challenges to law enforcement. If we were to come here for an active shooter event and there's a parent that came here, um, with a weapon, they have a concealed weapons permit, and we had, that's just another huge issue that we would have to sift through, um, and that has taken place in active shooter events throughout the country. So yes, it does, it absolutely, uh, presents a tremendous challenge.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you, um, spend time in the schools, Colonel, and talk with the students about hearing conversations or knowing that another student or some irate person is, has a plan to come into the school? Do you take the time to, uh, come into our schools and talk with them, our students, and tell them what you should do?
Probably, probably not as much as I should. Um, I entrust a, a good deal of that responsibility to Dave Boishman.
Thank you.
I think he's a, I think he's a great ambassador, uh, from the police department. I think he does a fantastic job here. Um, as I said just a couple of minutes ago, it's his passion. Um, he excels in it. He's a 30-year veteran that every day still, he really enjoys coming to work, and, and I think that's an asset for the police department, but more importantly, it's an asset for the school department. So to answer your question, do I? Nowhere near as much as I should, um, but I do entrust and I do believe firmly that Dave Boishman does an excellent job of that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I just add a comment to that? Um, I've seen firsthand how students will run up to Officer Boishman and just give him a fist pump or a high five when he's in the schools, and I think that says a lot about the job he does, so kids feel comfortable to go to him with school issues, personal issues, so I think he does an incredible job.
Thank you. You know, and, and to echo that, um, at an incident last year where there was some concern about a potential active shooter situation, we had feedback from the school staff that the kids readily calmed down once they saw Dave Boishman on scene of that particular incident, and I, again, I think that also speaks volumes to his capabilities, his rapport, and what he's built here.
I agree. Hearing no more questions, all in seen a motion.
To.
Prove the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Colonel.
Did you hear?
I did, thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel.
Next item, Consent Agenda, Approval of Minutes.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular, um, Barville School Committee meeting of April 10th, 2018, to approve warrant number 10 for the month of April dated May 8th, 2018, in the amount of $2,344,404.39, and also to approve the following bids. A motion to approve the bid for the asbestos payment to be awarded to Atlantic Abatement Providence, Rhode Island in the amount of $45,730, and to approve the bid for the elementary science kits for the Barville School Department into a memorandum of understanding with the URI Gems Net Project for a total of three year cost of $222,984. Excuse me.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion?
Um, I just wasn't present for last month's meeting, so I can't.
So you want to, may I, uh-
Yes.
Would like to do, uh, approve everything except that you want to be abstained from the minutes?
Yep.
Thank you.
All in favor?
I would have to do the same, actually.
Right.
That wasn't here at our last meeting either.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item four, Presentations by the Public to the School Committee. We have none this evening. Item five, Public Comment. Anyone wishing to speak to the school committee this evening? Having none. Item six, Personnel. Appointments, Leaves of Absence, Retirement Designations.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the following leaves of absences. Lisa Colom, English Language Arts, Grade Seven, Barville Middle School, on 8/29/18 through 11/29/18, and Joshua Goodwin, PBGR, Social Studies, Barville High School, 9/4/18 through 11/13/18.
Second.
Motion, a second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the following retirements with much regret. Susan Trank, Teacher Assistant, Austin T. Levy, June 30th, 2018, and Ruth Pearson, Guidance Secretary at Barville Middle School, June 30th, 2018.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the following resignation. Ryan Raffinelli, Tennis Head Coach, Barville High School, effective April 1st, 2018.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, um, I will make a motion to approve the following athletic appointments as presented.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I make an appoint, um, a motion to accept the appointment of Jay Brocher, After-School Year Book Advisor, 2017/18, for a stipend of $900.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Non-renewals.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to recommend the following non-renewal of teachers. Deborah Musso, Resource Teacher, Stair Farm Elementary. Erin LaFrasier, Grade Three Teacher, Stair Farm Elementary. Lindsay Elaine, Resource Teacher, William L. Callahan. Megan Mania, Social Studies, Barville High School. Caitlin Ross, Physics Teacher, Barville High School. Lisa Burke, Foreign Language Teacher, Barville High School. Amanda Lemus, Foreign Language Teacher, Barville High School. Amanda Manny, Grade Four, Stair Farm Elementary, uh, Stair Farm Elementary. And a tenured teacher, Molly-
Govea.
Govea, Mathematics, thank you, Barville High School.
A motion?
Second.
A second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye with regret.
Item seven, Old Business, Fiscal Year 18, BSD Budget Update.
Motion to open.
Second.
Motion to open in a second. Do you have anything to say, Ellen?
Um, yes, I have put forward some mine item transfers, specifically to move from various maintenance line items, the amount of $43,102 into the fuel oil line item, and this is to cover expenses that have exceeded our budget calculation.
Motion to approve the transfer of funds to the fuel oil line as requested.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fiscal Year 18, Rank Budget Update.
Motion to open.
Second.
Motion to open, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No transfers are recommended, it's just for information purposes.
Next item, Policy P3612, Homebound Instruction, Second Reading.
Mr. Chair, I make an motion to approve Policy P3612, Homebound Instruction, Second Reading and Dispense with the Reading.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any discussion?
Yes. My concern with this is we've added instructors may use technology as an instructional tool. I would like to also add, um, through the use of Skype, FaceTime, um, and I guess that's what I want to add, and then I saw in the last paragraph, it talks about- Page 40, thank you. Uh, homebound instruction will not be offered to students because they're failing a course or because they do not have enough credits. Now, at the beginning, it talks about, um, that it's only for people who are, have medical problems, and there, there should be temporary, no more than 10 weeks, and I'm wondering why we need this paragraph. Is it just to emphasize that there is no way you're gonna be putting these people in, do homebound? Okay. But the only thing I'd like to add is, um, the technology, using technology in the classroom because I feel it's least restrictive placement, even though they're home, they still could participate in a classroom, and, um, I think the question I had also was, um, is this considered, are they gonna be considered other health impaired, so they'll be under the special ed? No? So it's just a medical thing? Okay, so I would like to see, um, the use of Skype or FaceTime so that the child can, the student can participate in the classroom, if at all possible.
Is that, uh, is that something that we would just take for granted that it's part of technology?
I have a question.
It would be inclusive of that.
Would that be something that would be of a cost to the family?
No.
Yeah, okay.
So it would be in, inclusive of that although it, it's not written specifically in the words.
Yeah, I'd like to add it after the end of that sentence, including Skype or Facebook, so the child will be able to participate.
You don't wanna, you don't wanna do Facebook, do you?
No, I'm sorry, FaceTime.
There's, there's one paragraph in here that says, "Per regulation, the minimum number of hours of instruction shall be five hours per school week at the elementary level of education and six hours of the secondary level of education unless fewer hours are recommended by the physician. Instructors must hold a current Rhode Island Teaching Certificate in the area of instruction." So the hours are limited according to what the physician deems. If a child is, um, incapable of sitting up and using a computer, it would be-
Well, in the next paragraph, it says that unless absolutely necessary, instruction would not be provided in the home, so Skype and FaceTime would both be in the home, right? From the home?
Yes.
But that's not one-to-one instruction. That's not one-to-one instruction, that would just be, so the child can, student can be part of the classroom. I think it's really important that the student participate as much as possible, and now that we have technology that we can do that, you know, in a virtual sense, we need to be able to use it, and I think adding it within this, within this sentence would be much more appropriate.
I, I would, I would just caution you about being very specific because a team of people makes this decision, and we left it open just to use the word "technology." That can be included in it if the team decided that, but you don't wanna have a parent say, "Well, it's written in here, so I'm entitled to that. This is what I want," and the team may disagree with that. You just don't wanna be bound to that kind of language.
Why would the team disagree with that? What, give me an example, 'cause I, I don't understand it.
They might, they may come up with another, uh, electronic device as opposed to Skype to get the job done. They may not need it, for example. The team may suggest that it's not needed, and the parent will assist on it, and then, and they'll point to the language in the, in the policy, and then we'll be bound to the language in the policy. That's why keeping it open to technology just gives the team more options when they're making that decision, and, and at some point, I guess in the future, other, other devices may come along, which may be better than, than Skype, who knows? So just the word "technology" just leaves it open, um, and if something better comes along, then, you know, you'll have to come back as a committee, reconvene, and put that language in. This would just avoid all that.
Okay.
We'll agree to disagree.
Any other questions?
I don't know if you want to add to that, Candace.
I mean, I think teaching methodology is always gonna be locked up to the standard, I mean, so, I mean, I don't think it's necessary.
Any further questions?
Have you ever used it? Yet?
There's no one here has, no.
No.
So I, I mean, it's difficult given scheduling and- So I, I mean, it's difficult given scheduling in classrooms, if someone is truly ill and you say, well, we're going to provide FaceTime instruction.
Well, if it.
They're going to log into the math class in their third grade class every day. So at ten AM, Monday through Friday. Well, what happens if that student then is sick on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, that week during the math class? When we decided that their class instruction is FaceTime. So then what? How do they make up those dates?
That would be under the doctor's thing.
Well, and you said that it's going to be FaceTime.
No.
So that's what their methodology would be. So they wouldn't have a backup system for that.
They wouldn't have a person going to them.
Yeah.
Why can't they have a person going to them too? This wouldn't cost anything.
They have a limited amount of hours that are available.
Mm-hmm.
These kids are sick.
No, I had a student in my classroom when I was a student, and she had a back operation and couldn't move. And she was able to listen to the class and participate when she could. And it worked very well, and I don't understand why it can't be here. And it has to be appropriate.
Technology does cover that.
Mm-hmm.
So it is always an option that they can discuss. I haven't had a situation in my time here or anywhere else where that has been the preferred methodology.
Can we say, um, the use of Skype if appropriate?
Um, Alex, question?
Those tools can still be utilized the way the policy is written now, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, but is it a question? Does it come up when you discuss this? Can we do this? Do, do you use that term? Can we use Skype? Can we use FaceTime for these kids?
Um, I'm not sitting in everything with that, those conversations happen. Um, typically it is one-on-one tutoring around scheduling to the parent, doctor's appointments. Um, you know, that is typically the, the conversation is around the tutor.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Just, so not specifically with homebound instruction, but I would say that we become a fairly tech savvy group of teachers in this district. And that, and things like Google Classroom and Google Hangouts are being used on a regular basis in classrooms. I've seen regular classrooms where a student happened to be out sick for the day. And the teacher is able to text and say, hey, you're filling up to it, log into Google Classroom, your team is working on their project. And the child is able to participate. So it's becoming part of the regular, uh, process of instruction in general. And so those conversations do come up on a regular basis. And I presume that if a conversation about working with a child is homebound, that that would also come.
So what you're saying is that what Sylvia is asking is already included in technology?
Right, the, the details of the instruction would be a conversation for the team that's determining that kind of instruction. I think, I think technology would cover that.
All right, thank you. So I think we've had plenty of discussion. So have a motion, second, there are discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, thank you. Superintendent's report.
Motion to open.
Second.
Motion to open in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Mister Chairman. Um, I recommend to the committee that, uh, you rescind Robert Capuano's, uh, non-renewal letter, letter dated February one, two thousand eighteen by myself. And the February fourteen, two thousand, uh, letter by the chairman, uh, effective immediately. And I've listed the reason for you in your packet.
So moved.
A motion?
Si- second.
And a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The, um, negotiating team that negotiated with Council ninety-four, which included, um, the chairman and, and, uh, myself and, uh, Robin, uh, were recommending to you that you approve the Council ninety-four contract for three years. Uh, we've provided you with all the information, uh, necessary for you to make that decision. The subcommittee feels very comfortable with the contract that has been negotiated. Um, I think it's a very fair contract, uh, you know, want to thank Council ninety-four for their cooperation. And I think at this point, just to, uh, emphasize, one of the issues in the contract is, uh, with the approval of this contract, all the employees would now have been moved from the one thousand, two thousand deductible in their healthcare. So I would make that recommendation that the school committee approve the Council ninety-four contract. If you approve the contract, then we would need to take this to the town council tomorrow evening for their approval.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. The, um, budget subcommittee, uh, has also revised, um, its FY nineteen budget. Um, as you recall, back in January, we presented a budget of approximately one point eight million dollars. Obviously, at that time, we do not have the numbers that we currently have. We project healthcare costs. We have more definitive numbers now. Uh, we're able to make a recommendation a lot less than one point eight million dollars. Uh, the factors that go into, uh, making our recommendation between January and April and May is that we're able to take a look at the high school schedule at this point in the school year. We get more definitive numbers in terms of our exact healthcare costs. Uh, Department of Education gives us more definitive numbers in terms of what we're looking at for an appropriation. So at the present time, we were able to, um, cut our original request by eight hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars. We know that the town is struggling this year, more so than in previous years regarding, uh, their appropriation to us. We're trying to cooperate as best we can with them to present them with a budget that would be acceptable. Uh, in the information that I have forwarded to you, uh, you saw where the budget board recommended, um, eight hundred thousand dollars to the school department. We're trying to meet that number as best we can. And, uh, today, the, um, town manager came out with his recommendation, uh, which was, uh, eight hundred and seven thousand dollars. He also indicated in his, um, in his budget, uh, one of our recommendations, which we go to the council with every year, which is to ask him to put aside approximately a hundred thousand dollars for out-of-state tuitions. So he also did mention that in his budget presentation, which he will give to the council tomorrow evening. So, uh, I think we're pretty close to coming to an agreement with the budget based on where we were at one point eight. With the cut of eight, eight hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars, we would be looking at a, at a request of nine hundred and seven thousand dollars. So eight hundred and seven thousand of that already been recommended by the town manager. And, um, if we can get the council to, uh, approve the hundred thousand dollar set aside, then we have an agreement. So I think the budget before you is, is, is pretty much in a place where we can certainly work with the town council, uh, to get them to approve, um, the request. But prior to that, going to the town council, you need to have your approval. So I would recommend that you approve the, uh, the recommended change in, uh, our budget for FY nineteen. That pretty much summarizes where we were between January and where we are now. And you have, you have a lot of the details in front of you.
Mister Chair, I make a motion to approve the revised fiscal year nineteen budget. And note that it's only two point seven nine percent. We're staying within. Second.
A motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item nine, administrator reports.
Mister Chair, I make a motion to receive and file with a big thank you to all administrators, staff, and students for all the great educational information. Also, the beautiful artwork, sports, and other projects presented in these reports. Thank you very much.
Second.
Motion is second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just have a question.
Okay.
Um, is this the, the month where we usually give admin teams a, a little bit of a break for the?
Next month.
We give.
Is it next month?
Next month, June.
Oh, sorry, you have a more month.
Make the motion for, for the summer, for July and August.
We'll return back to that comment in four weeks.
I think there'll be a motion forthcoming from town.
But thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so now we need to do the vote, please. We have the.
In a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item, reports of school committee, subcommittees. We have none this evening.
Please, someone come in. Uh, the next Health and Wellness Subcommittee meeting is this upcoming Monday, the fourteenth of May. Um, it's going to be here at four o'clock in the media center. Uh, and we're just going to go over, um, any new projects initiatives that the schools, um, have had over the last few months. And it's going to be our last meeting to wrap up this school year. We'll reconvene next year.
Great, thank you. Good work. Anyone else? Item eleven, correspondence communications. I have mine. I can have mine this month. Okay. Item twelve, new business, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school committee meeting calendar.
Motion to approve the two thousand eighteen nineteen school committee meeting calendar as presented.
Comment?
Comment?
Um, I feel like every year we talk about the meeting start time. Do we want to stick with the?
Six thirty.
Six thirty?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Doesn't matter to me, I just, I know we always talk about that, so I don't know if anyone would want to have it earlier at six o'clock.
And the second Tuesday of each month.
Right, I just, I know we, we go back and forth between six and six thirty, so I don't know if we wanted to have that.
Considering most of us come storming in at six twenty-five, eh, we'll stick with six thirty.
Works for me.
We don't want to promote people speeding or anything.
Yes, Alex, we do not want to do that.
Ouch, okay.
Again, thank you.
I am striking out tonight.
Um, question, are these all first Tuesday of the month?
Second.
Second.
Second Tuesdays, are you?
Yep.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, motion is second, further discussion?
Nope.
We don't have a second?
Second.
Second, motion is second, no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, school, student, parent handbooks.
Mister Chair, I make a motion to approve the student parent handbooks as presented with all changes.
Second.
A motion is second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, good job with the handbooks. Increase in preschool tuition.
Mister Chair, I'd like to make a motion to table this until the June meeting. Uh, I have some, uh, questions, uh, regarding the, uh, increase.
Um, uh, could I ask you to, um, to open for discussion, and we'll see what Robin has to say?
Okay. I will rescind that motion and open it for discussion.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Robin, could you just give us a, just in brief, because this is like, kind of new to most of us. We don't see it in our operating budget, we don't.
So, so they, these, um, tuition amounts are used to support the preschool, um, expenses for the program. They do not, um, cover all the expenses, it's really just a toll bill. Um, the, the town council has allowed us, um, I would say for the last ten or so years, to develop a revolving fund. So what we do is we collect the tuitions from the peer role models. And with those funds, we deposit it and help offset the expenses from the preschool program. So currently, um, we have four preschool programs, or four preschool classes. And it's usually eight students that are special needs students, and those are the ones that are required. Oh, I'm sorry. So we have seven special ed and eight role model, peer role models. And it's the peer role models that pay the tuition. So does that answer your question, or did you draw?
How many do we normally have on a waiting list, you know?
Um, I know we have currently twenty-two students that are the peer role models. And I do know for next year, we've started registrations, and we do have a waiting list for, again, the role models.
And so, definition of peer role models?
I'll defer that to you.
Okay.
If a student who's passed the child outreach screening does not have an IEP or a disability, documented disability, it still falls within that three to five week range.
Okay.
That's, I have a question.
Sorry.
You, you have a, in noted in the paperwork given to us that you were, had, are interviewing participants. Uh, but you also have students, young, young people who will, cannot be brought into the program because they're on a waiting list. Um, is there any, is this increase to help bring those students into this program?
No. No, we can only have, um, if I'm wrong, but there, we're only, we can only have fifteen students in a class. So of those fifteen students, the eight, um, eight, the eight, uh, role models. So that's why we have a, a waiting list, because we, the amount of students that want to attend have exceeded the amount of role models that we have. So in order to increase the enrollment, you would have to add another classroom.
That's not possible?
Well, we only add a preschool program because of the students with disabilities.
Oh, I see.
So we're allowed up to seven students with disabilities in each section of the class.
Okay.
And we get close, but we don't ever fill the full order. So the seven, there's twenty-eight spots. We don't ever fill it, we get close, but we don't ever fill it.
Okay.
Do you make a comment?
Yes, sure.
Um, actually, it's two thousand a year is not a bad price for it at all. It comes out to about eleven dollars a day. And if we, and if you, um, compare that to what a half day would cost for a regular babysitter, it's very, very nice price.
When was the last time you had a s- subcommittee or committee or team that looked at the program and, and saw if we could expand it?
Um, well, the last time that we asked for increases was two thousand twelve.
Two thousand twelve.
So we did have a subcommittee that did two thousand twelve.
Can I, expanding the program with more special ed kids in it?
Correct.
Do we have the special ed kids?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
That's a good thing.
Yes, that's.
Special needs, yes, they do.
Okay. So thank you for the discussion. Would you like to make your original motion?
I will rescind my motion and make a motion to approve the increase for the preschool tuition. Second.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution supporting school construction bond.
Mister Chair, I make a motion to, um, accept the resolution supporting the school construction bond.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. P three five two one, grading policy, revised first reading.
Mister Chair, I make a motion to accept policy P three five two one, grading policy, revised first reading and dispense with the reading.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Job description, electrical maintenance technician.
Mister Chair, I make a motion to accept the job description for the electrical maintenance technician as presented.
Second.
A motion is second, any discussion? Sylvia?
Can I ask, are these specs being rewritten? Do we have somebody? Do we have somebody or in a position that you just want to?
No.
Clarify?
No, we don't, we don't have anybody in these positions, in these certified positions currently. We are restructuring our maintenance department within the school department. Uh, we're, we're going to, uh, hire a certified HVAC and electrician. Uh, and we've also, uh, offered an olive branch to the town to have our facilities director oversee the town maintenance, where we could service the town side with our HVC and electrical persons. Right now, the Board of Administration has control of many of the buildings in the town, and when they need service, they call in a vendor. So we think we can also save the town money. Uh, by doing this, we will also be saving, uh, several thousand dollars on the school department side, uh, which has been factored into our, into our budget cut. And the other advantage is, is that the resolution that you just approved for the bonding, the two hundred fifty million dollars, um, the state's going to require that we have certified people on board to make sure that the buildings are, are, are kept up with. Right now, um, uh, under our current structure, there are times where our people can fix the HVAC or the electrical, there are times where our people cannot fix it, and we have to call in a vendor, which ends up costing the school department, uh, many dollars. So, we believe in restructuring the whole maintenance department, this is a more viable way to go, more cost-efficient way to go, in terms of not only servicing the upkeep of our buildings, but also putting ourselves in a better position to apply for the, the two hundred fifty million dollars when the school department feels it's necessary to apply for those, for those dollars to keep, keep the buildings, uh, upgraded structurally.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh, one more question.
Sure.
Are the salaries counted in this new budget?
Yes.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Job description, HVAC maintenance technician.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to accept the jobs description for the HVAC maintenance technician as presented.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item thirteen, committee on agenda items. Hearing none. Item fourteen, pending issues, resolution on gun-free schools, we did approve that.
Motion to remove. Because of re- because of approval.
A motion to remove, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is second. Sylvia, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Item fifteen.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate teachers of the year, thank you.